All right. He has a head, a foot, four legs, and no arms.
A bed, a foot, four legs, and no arms?
A bed?
I don't worry.
You're just like a treat.
It's not really about obviousness, that's not the test. That we use her.
Yes.
Nah, chill out, man. Please come up. When? Where was you at? I did it for real. How you doing, Lo?
After... Do you want to nail? All right. Do you want to have a cup of water, please?
I got it.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the council meeting. I hope you all had a wonderful day. And it's good to see all of you here.
Oh, wow. Such nice words.
How are you, Dr. Bellamy?
Please stand. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions is a flag in the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Thomas, roll call, please.
Dr. Bellamy?
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Signer?
Here.
Ms. Galvin?
Here.
Thank you. Any announcements?
Do you want to do it? Go ahead. You give it so much more emphasis. Go for it.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Hill. I have one announcement. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I have one announcement from Mr. Alex Zan and Virginia A. Gatewood. They both are presenting the 5th Annual My Help List Contest. So this is a thinking, writing, and reading activity. So here's what it's all about. You were asking for all students throughout Charlottesville and surrounding counties in grade categories K through 2, K through 2nd grade, 3rd through 5th grade, 6th through 8th grade, and grades 9th through 12. Those are, that's everyone who's eligible. And here's what you have to do. You're gonna write an entry in 150 words or less, and you're gonna share why it's important to help people because. You're gonna list five things you have done to help someone, or how you can help someone. Again, here's the rules. 150 words or less. Share in writing. Why it's important to help people? So, "It's important to help people because." List five things you have done to help someone, or how you can help someone. The winners, here's what you get. One winner from each grade category will be chosen to win a $100 cash prize, with a reception to be held in their honor. Winners will be announced on NBC 29 and alexzan.com. The contest runs from Monday, March 11, 2019, through Friday, April 19, 2019. Again, it's from Monday, March 11, next Monday, through Friday, April 19. You can drop or send all entries to Carver Rec Center using My Help List. And the address there is 233 4th Street Northwest, Charlottesville, Virginia, 22903. Okay? So get in contact with Mr. Zan, all of our youngsters, not only in Charlottesville but surrounding areas, grades K through 2, 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12. Enter the contest, get a $100 cash prize for winning. I have one more quick announcement or acknowledgement, Mayor Walker, if you don't mind. I wanted to give some kudos to our superintendent, Dr. Rosa Atkins, our Charlottesville City School Superintendent, Dr. Rosa Atkins. She's in the back. Dr. Atkins participated in a panel discussion at Virginia State University last Tuesday, a lunch discussion with about 100 young folks from both Virginia State University as well as Virginia Union University. She represented the city very well. Many of my students who were there were interested in trying to come and work and teach in Charlottesville after her passionate speech about the do's and don'ts, and keeping your head up, fighting through adversity. So I think we really should be appreciative of the gem that we have in Dr. Atkins. So Dr. Atkins, as well as the school board members, thank you for all that you do.
Madam Mayor, thank you, and good evening to the audience. I would just like to let folks know that on March 25 at City Space, the City Attorney's Office, in conjunction with the Virginia Coalition for Open Government and their Executive Director Meg Ryan, will be providing a FOIA seminar that we hope serves as training for boards and commission members of the City of Charlottesville, as well as the public who would like to attend.
Thank you. And I would like to remind everybody that this Wednesday, you all will have an opportunity to meet our finalist for the City Manager position. It is one of the most, if not the most important decision that this council will make this year with, and we definitely need as many of you all to be a part of that as possible. Today, we worked out with Dr. Atkins, making sure that our youth were able to participate in the meet and greet and an interview with the City Manager. So we have invested a lot of time. Councilor Hill has been the primary working with the executive search firm to make sure that community members had an opportunity to be a major part of this. So we hope you all take note of that and come out Wednesday, 4 o'clock, at the Jefferson, at the Heritage Center. And we'll have interviews from 4 to 6, and then a meet and greet from 6 to 8. So to give you an opportunity to, you know, walk around and mingle. Hopefully, be very mindful of the fact that there are other people hoping to, you know, get some time with the candidates too, but that you'll have the opportunity to do that and see Zai in the back. So make sure, hopefully, you're aware that they'll be at the high school.
I didn't know that.
Okay. We just worked it out today. So it was really last minute, but you know, hopefully, and that'll be an opportunity for the students to interview the panelists, which I think is very, very important. So we hope to see you all Wednesday and bring, you know, five friends or so each.
And tomorrow morning, the Communications Department will be releasing the names and resumes for those three finalists.
All right.
All right. Mayor, can I say one more quick thing? I know y'all gonna beat me up, but I want to make sure that the community knows, we've talked about this a little bit, but it's really important that we acknowledge the work of both Mayor Walker and Vice Mayor Hill throughout this City Manager process. They've been out of the limelight and not really talking a great deal about it, but these two have put in a ton of work and a ton of hours to ensure that this process goes smoothly. They've literally been the staff for us in this whole process, making the phone calls, working with people together, contacting the rest of council. And I think I can speak for the rest of your colleagues and how much we appreciate y'all working on this for us. And it's been going really smooth, and I'm looking forward to us bringing this through. So thank you all.
Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bellamy. Ditto.
I was gonna say, y'all better clap for it.
So this evening, council is appointing the following to our boards and commissions. For the Building Code Board of Appeals, Peter Weems. For the Charlottesville Albemarle Airport Commission, Michael Pritchard. For the Charlottesville Economic Development Authority, Nicole Fernandez and Jay O'Donnell. For the Human Rights Commission, Jeannie Abinader, Ideel Acton, Chantelle Bingham, Elliott Brown, Phoebe Brown, Ernest Chambers, Catherine Loughlin, Sue Lewis, Andy Orban, Catherine Spear, Matthew Tennant, Lindell Von Schill, and Robert Woodside. For the Housing Advisory Committee, Christopher Murray, under the developer role, Phil Duranzio in the banker role, and LD Perry as a citizen at large. And also wanted to comment that council will be exploring HACX recommendation to add the Charlottesville Works Initiative as a permanent position. And so we'll be working through with the HAC that, and also just relooking at all the membership that we have on the Housing Advisory Committee. And that certainly involves a current member that, through the Charlottesville Works Initiative, we look to maintain. So that's, I guess that's a motion?
Second?
Please vote. That carries five to zero. All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak on any item that's on the consent agenda? All right, Ms. Thomas, could you read the consent agenda, please?
A, minutes. February 19, 2019, regular meeting. February 20, 2019, special meeting. B, appropriation. Dockless mobility funds for bicycle and pedestrian improvements, $50,575, second of two readings. C, appropriation. Capital fund transfer for completion of the standards and design manual rewrite, $66,680, second of two readings. D, resolution. Approval of the 2018 to 2022 Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Report, first of one reading. E, resolution. Business Equity Fund Donation Agreement, first of one reading. F, resolution. Acquisition of Hartman's Mill Road Land, first of one reading. G, resolution. Support of Friendship Court Redevelopment, Phase 1, first of one reading. H, resolution. Support for Crescent Hall's Redevelopment, first of one reading. I, resolution. Support for South First Street Redevelopment, first of one reading. J, resolution. City Market Lease, first of one reading. K, ordinance. Encroachment and aerial easement from city for code building on West Main Mall, second of two readings. L, ordinance. Telecommunications franchise to MCI Communications, first of two readings.
All right, thank you. Need a counselor to make a motion to amend.
Yes. We're looking to make amendments to the resolutions, which are a part of items G, H, and I. And so I should go ahead and just read the language? Should I read the whole entire resolution?
I would just read the sentence and the additional.
Okay. So for each of the resolutions around supporting Crescent Hall, South First Street, and Friendship Court, there's language that's adding. For the two that are CRAs, it's "satisfying the conditions of a memorandum of understanding agreed to by the city and the Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority." And for that tied to Friendship Court, it's "satisfying the conditions of a memorandum of understanding agreed to by the city and the Piedmont Housing Alliance," is the added language to the resolutions that are currently in council's packet.
Can you second for the amendments?
Yes, sir.
I second those amendment.
Do we have to vote on those amendments? Yes, okay. So, please vote on the amendment. Okay. That carries five to zero.
And then we make a motion to adopt the consent agenda with this amendment.
Yes.
So moved.
Second?
All right, please vote. All right, and that carries five to zero.
Outstanding job, Counselors.
Pause so early.
Good job. Good job.
Great. All right, now we're at the response from the City Manager from our last council meeting. Mr. Murphy?
Two items, Mayor Walker and council. One is that there's some items on pedestrian closures of streets and sidewalks that the traffic engineer is looking at in addition to the crash data at Willoughby. We'll give you more information at that at an upcoming meeting. Second, we've talked for some time now about this idea originally presented to you by Ms. Carrie. You promised me she'd be here tonight, but I'm sure she's watching. And we have settled on a pilot date for moving the trolley directly from Main Street down South Street and then turning on 2nd Street and crossing the mall. And that will be next Monday, a week from today, on the 11th. After we pilot that, we could as soon as about three weeks later, make that change. If it works with the bus length and, you know, the mechanics of making the change, I also want to advise council before we do it, just so that you'll be aware, downtown parking's always an issue. We'll probably be eliminating a couple spaces on 2nd Street. I just want to quantify that for you before we change it operationally.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now we're moving into Community Matters. First up, we have Bill Langford.
Hi, Mayor Walker. I'm Bill Langford, 1400 East Market Street. I'd like to yield my time to Michael Payne, please.
Hello. Thank you. I would like to talk today about fossil fuel divestment at the national level, as the Green New Deal is changing the conversation on environmental justice. We need to be thinking about what can we do as a city to create a Green New Deal for Charlottesville that amplifies these efforts for bold climate action happening at the national level. Environmentalism is not a niche issue. It is directly connected to affordable housing, economic and racial justice, and economic inequality. And I think some of the two most powerful things City Council can do for moving towards a Green New Deal for Charlottesville is, again, committing itself to a bold greenhouse gases emissions reduction target of 100% clean energy by 2035, which matches what other cities have already done in divestment from fossil fuels in the war economy. Charlottesville on its own can obviously not solve the climate crisis, but actions we take can reverberate statewide and nationally. Fossil fuel divestments is one of the most powerful actions we can take on climate change. The 100 top corporations in the world are responsible for over 70% of fossil fuel emissions. Climate change is a problem of corporate power. And if we can pull our money away from the corporations and the military-industrial complex responsible for the climate crisis, we can start to strike at the roots of it. This is not a niche movement. If we support fossil fuel divestment, we would be following the lead of cities that include in part Burlington, Vermont, Berkeley, California, New York City, Washington DC, and Madison, Wisconsin. It is support, the divestment movement is supported by the Secretary General of the UN. It is supported by 350.org and other leading climate change organizations, and there is a clear precedent locally for divestment. The city in the past has divested from South Africa during apartheid and from Sudan during the civil war there. The city currently uses a corporate bond from ExxonMobil and has significant fossil fuel investments in the retirement commissions and other areas. This is something we can take action on, and I think if we divest from both fossil fuels in the war economy, we would become the first city in Virginia to do so, and we could help spark a divestment movement throughout Virginia. I would encourage everyone in the audience who supports fossil fuel divestment to stand up right now, and if you have your signs, hold them up. This is a popular movement, supported locally in part by Indivisible Charlottesville, the Charlottesville Amnesty International, Sunrise Charlottesville, Together Charlottesville, and at least four current City Council candidates, including myself, Sina McGill, Lloyd Snook, and Paul Long. Please take action on divesting from fossil fuels in the war economy. And I have a resolution here that the city could support to again make it clear that City Council wants city staff in hiring its new investment manager and managing its investment portfolio to divest from fossil fuels in the war economy. It's the moral choice, and it makes fiscal sense as well. Thank you.
Eric Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Walker, and members of the council. My name is Eric Terry. I'm the president of the Virginia Restaurant, Lodging, and Travel Association. We represent over 1,500 members statewide in the restaurant, lodging, and travel industries. Couple of things I wanted to point out as you talk about the budget and sort of what the plans are for that. I want to point out what the payroll is here in Charlottesville City in the hotel industry. We have over $17 million in annual payroll in our hotels here in Charlottesville. As you probably have noticed, there've been a lot of new investments, over $110 million in new hotel investments. And that's something that I think, you know, should give pause to whether or not you raise that tax with so much new product. You've got the Quirk Hotel that's under construction. You've got the Draspen that opened last year, the development of all the other projects. And so I think you're in a pretty good place. What is not necessarily good is that your hotel occupancies have dropped over the last couple of years, and one of our other speakers tonight will talk to that a little more succinctly. The other thing is, when you look at the CACs in the county or in the city versus the county, as you look at this raise, you'll be 33% above the county on that. And so I'm not sure when people make decisions, especially with group meetings and things that they can move around to different places, weddings, other things, the tax can make a big difference if you have, you know, a number of rooms, you have a number of other things. The other thing I wanted to point out to you, and we're happy to share some information and study if you'd like to see it, is just the regressive nature of the meals tax. And I think, you know, the misconception is that it really is across the board, but in terms of percentages, household incomes below $30,000 spend 8.1% of their annual household income on food. And the reason for that is they're working families, they have children, they're going to soccer practice, and going to different things, or they have activities, and so they're grabbing a meal quickly outside of the home. For households over 100,000, it's only 3.1%. So it does disproportionately impact your lower-income households as you look at a meals tax. Just know that they are spending a lot more on that. You know, the last thing, or two more things I would point out. The county actually allows hotels, as they remit their lodging tax, to receive the discount for the credit card fees. As you probably know, credit card fees can be up over 3% on the collection of lodging taxes. The city does not allow that. It does on the meals tax have a percentage in there. And I would ask you to consider that if you are intent on increasing the lodging tax, you really should address that because you're putting them at a disadvantage of collecting the tax for you and also incurring an expense. So I don't think you want to do that. Lastly, I'll leave you with, we have a number of hospitality programs here in the area. PBCC is starting up a culinary program and some other programs. And so we've got a lot of people who are coming into the market employment-wise, and with the advent of the new hotels, I think you'll see a lot more of those coming forward. So please consider that as you look at this tax. I think you'll go that way. All right? Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
And we haven't had at length discussions in regards to the meals tax, whether the council as a whole is for it or against it, or so forth. But I think just based off some of the data on what you asked, one question that I'll optimize many of the hotel owners and the individuals who are in this space is, in terms of a living wage, what you're saying that we're bringing in a great deal of new participants who will be included in the industry, PVC and so forth. If we're still paying them $8, $9 an hour?
Actually, according to Bureau Labor Statistics, and I'm happy to share that with you, we're $12.56 on average for in the hospitality industry.
In the area?
In the area. In Charlottesville proper. That's from the Bureau Labor Statistics. That's where my $17 million number came from.
So the average is the question there?
Yeah, the average is $17.50. And I would say, we do have some hoteliers here who could answer the question. Again, you're talking about housekeepers and other folks. Most of them are well above that in today's market, just because of the desire for more than...
Well above the $12.50.
I'm sorry?
Well above the...
No, no, no. I'm saying they're not at seven, you know, at the minimum wage level.
They're not at the minimum wage.
Correct.
Right. So then the question becomes, how do we get them to that level?
Well, I think the market is beginning to do that, as you have more demand for employees. And one of the hoteliers tonight told me that, you know, they're continuing to search for employees, and they have a lot of open positions. And so that is already beginning to sort of drive that upwards. Especially as you look at the current immigration policies that have really, really sort of hurt the employment market for restaurants and lodging, both.
Thank you.
So were you a part of the Richmond and Alexandria discussions last year?
I was.
And how are those restaurants doing?
You know, I think the concern is, and I'll defer to one of the restaurateurs, is that it does hurt, I think, the opening of new restaurants. We haven't seen much growth in new restaurant openings in Charlottesville. We've seen quite a bit of growth in the number of restaurants in the county. And so, you know, people do make decisions based on...
So there's a space difference?
There certainly is that. But I mean, there's opportunities for restaurants, and certainly you've got some, you know, some critical mass down here of the hotels opening and everything else. But, you know, I think in many cases, you know, as you look at the increases in meals tax, and the Richmond one was certainly not a popular one, and they had a similar situation with Henrico County and the City of Richmond and the surrounding counties there that were at a different number, it has impacted some of their group business, you know, where the groups, again, have the ability to move, you know, amongst different locations. And so, again, I think as you look at what the industry employs, in terms of number of employees, you know, going back to the earlier comment, one of the things that our industries are is we're a growth industry, and we're an opportunity for people to advance, whether they have a four-year degree or they have a high school. And these high school programs that we operate, I think, really give students a chance to move into the industry and move up pretty rapidly. And that's really, you know, I myself started at Busch Gardens in Williamsburg. I was making $1.90 an hour, and I was making pizzas. So, you know, I think that when you look at that in terms of growth, we do have an opportunity for people to advance, so.
So have there been any restaurants or hotels that have pulled out of discussions of opening here as a result of this?
I'm not aware of any. That's probably a question you'd have to, economic development and whatnot, so I don't know. I do know that the Quirk is still under construction, is scheduled to open, I saw early next year, so.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Louisa?
Hello.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you? You didn't say my last name.
I know, because I was about to butcher it, so I just gave up.
I'm here for two things.
Oh, you want to introduce?
Huh?
You can do it.
Candelario.
Yes.
Oh, my address, I live in the city. So I'm here for two things. Two different things. The first thing is, all of the funds that are going to the affordable housing are great and wonderful, but I want to remind you guys to not forget about homeownership and Habitat and giving a portion of the funds to Habitat as well, because homeownership is crucial to growth. And I just have to say, it's changed my life to become a homeowner, so just that. And then the second thing is the school reconfiguration for Walker and Buford. Just want to let you know that I'm for it. I think that it's a great idea. I have two kids, well, no, I have three kids who have went through Buford, and two who have went through Walker and Buford. And I think that them having, the kids having more of a stable environment by having the two schools combined would be very beneficial to their growth. My son had such a hard time the first year of Walker, because I feel like he was just so immature for the... so immature for the, for the environment being so big that he wasn't able to sort of have the the same kind of, for lack, I can't find a word, but the same kind of care that you would have in an elementary school for a fifth grader. So I think that that would be beneficial for the kids. Also, just, but without forgetting the equity part for the kids who are currently in the school, though. But yeah, so, and I think that's all I have to say. I can't, don't have much words today, but yeah, so that's it. Habitat, don't forget us, and the reconfiguration, so, thank you.
Thank you. Susan Payne.
While Ms. Payne is coming up, Louisa, great job last week with the Black History Month program at Buford. Outstanding job.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Susan Payne. I am, live, work at two oh six East Jefferson Street downtown Charlottesville. The tourism industry is now in a position for growth, following two very challenging years and a downturn in their industry. The Charlottesville Albemaro Convention and Visitors Bureau is reorganized, full city representation for the first time. On the board is Kathy Galvin, Mike Signer, Mike Murphy, and Chris Engel. These hold important board positions, and there is currently a search underway for an executive director. We know this work is important to bring the importance of tourism to the Charlottesville City Council, to represent us to the Charlottesville City Council. In Charlottesville, the local tax receipts are eight million five hundred thousand. In Albemaro, the number is thirteen million seven hundred and fifty thousand. Coming off the events of August twelfth that created a tourism downturn and looking at the refocus of CACBB, there is definitely room to grow the industry. The county meals tax is four percent, the city is considering six. The county lodging tax is five percent, the city is considering eight. The differential is significant. An alternative to raising taxes is to grow the market. We would like to bring more people to Charlottesville, we'd like them to stay longer, and we'd like them to spend more money. In closing, the tourism industry does support affordable housing, increase salaries for police officers, and increase salaries for city employees, and increase funding for Charlottesville city schools. We support the goals of the city council, but believe growing the industry and not taxing the industry will generate higher tax receipts and not hurt the local restaurants and the local hotels. If anyone has questions or would like me to back up this with state statistics, please let me know. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Payne, I have one question. Ms. Payne, I have one quick question on your floor. Thanks for the note and your comments. I find it interesting in regards to, let's try to grow the industry opposed to tax it, is that there's no way in which we could do both simultaneously? Like, we can't help us grow the industry while still looking to increase the taxes? Not saying that's what we're going to do, I'm just asking the question.
That is clearly your decision. I think that what I'm hoping is that now that city council has one-on-one representation, they will understand that every dollar they spend on tourism, they have a six-dollar return. And that's demonstrated. We have not done too much in two years, because we haven't had adequate support. And that's hopefully what we'll get to, but it doesn't seem like the best time to tax tourism.
Okay.
That's, that's the point.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Payne.
All right, Claire Habell.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Claire Habell. I live at three zero one Valley Road Extended. I just want to say thank you all for listening to the community. I know it means a great deal to not only myself, but the folks who get to speak with you tonight. I'm here to speak about the climate action planning process that's underway. I know you have heard about it last week, times before, and I'm certain times coming up. I just wanted to spend the time tonight to tell you about what I do for work in Charlottesville, and some things that my organization are doing on the lines of climate action planning. I work for the Charlottesville Climate Collaborative. You might remember my colleague Terry Kent speaking with you last week. I'm here to tell you that I'm the residential program manager for this organization, and I go around to different homes in the area and speak with families who are interested in reducing their carbon footprint. So I know firsthand that a lot of people in our community are looking for Charlottesville to lead on climate action. I won't spend a whole lot of time telling you about what these community members want, because we've put together a letter addressed to you all for them to sign, telling you what they want to see. And leading up until the public comment period is closed on the seventeenth, I wanted to introduce you to some of these ideas that we're going to be presenting with a handful of signatures on them. As of this morning, we have just, just shy of six hundred signatures, and we plan on collecting more and more as the time rolls on. You've heard lots of ideas about what a leadership-level goal in greenhouse gas emissions reductions should be, but these are a few ideas that me and six hundred other community members think that you should all agree on, as you review the recommendation by staff. The reasons that this is important are not new to any of us, but I want to remind you that we all believe that our local government should enact laws, should enact resolutions, should set goals that reflect our values as community members. We also know that leadership is vital for ensuring that our community stays one of leaders, one of decision-makers and problem solvers in the Commonwealth. We know that the health and safety of our community members are at risk as years go on, and climate change becomes more and more and more of a reality. And lastly, because we're all in this together. The Charlottesville Climate Collaborative doesn't suggest that the residents solve this problem alone. In fact, we've been talking with businesses as well as private schools and a handful of community members to tell you what these goals should be. Namely, we want you to establish a best-in-class climate goal that represents the most recent science. So this would look like a forty-five percent reduction of our two thousand and ten baseline by the year twenty thirty, and achieving carbon neutrality by the year twenty fifty. And I have to say that we would be the first city in the Commonwealth to set a goal with that inclusion. We also urge you to suggest that county, that city undertakes a greenhouse gas inventory every two years. With a goal like this leading so quickly to our end time, we want to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. So I want to thank you all for listening to me this evening. We will be presenting this when the comment period closes and hoping to have close to a thousand signatures that echo the community voice for a strong greenhouse gas reduction goal.
Thank you. Ray Masters.
I'm here tonight to speak about my most recent assessment of my home. I live in Star Hill. My wife and I have lived there since two thousand and three. We've received several increases in our assessment, but the thirty percent we've received the last two years is an eye-opener. I've heard a lot about homeownership, affordability, affordable housing. I don't understand how any responsible family could plan for a thirty percent increase in their taxes, especially when you budget. I don't know anybody getting that kind of raise in their pay. Understand, you're going to be setting tax rates, you know? That's really, really the other factor when it comes to what I pay out of my pocket, my wife and I pay out of our pocket every year. So it's just something to think about, you know? And we were really pleased to find out through the news, as we did the last time, there were big plans for our neighborhood, when we found out they were going to build a sixty-unit building called The Crossings. We found that out through the newspaper. So as, as a, as a neighborhood, we're, we're a bit skeptical about the city's idea of inclusion and community input. And then we found out that there was a five hundred thousand dollar grant or donation made to a community development corporation. We just had a meeting with them. And a lot of their messaging was about community input. And we're, we were interested in what that really means, because we certainly had none on the last time the city council decided to take and pay attention to our neighborhood. We don't even have a sign, but we got a community development corporation with a small area plan. Having lived in Star Hill since two thousand and three, there's not a lot of developmental property available in our neighborhood that I'm aware of. Now, she touched on a few spots that she's supposedly going to draft up a plan for, and I pointed out, are either of those parcels available for sale? I mean, I would think that would be an important part before someone was given such a size of money to come up with a development plan. But that answer was no. Those parcels, which would be the city yard and staples, according to her, are not for sale that I'm aware of, and nobody in my neighborhood is. Then it was really interesting, you know, they, they've got a pretty interesting budget here, and I, I found it, you know, via the internet and whatnot, and there's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated out of the five hundred thousand dollars, or seventy percent of it, to what's called a small area plan. Feel that sorely lacking any detail, any due diligence by council when they're talking about tax dollars. That's just me as a taxpayer since two thousand and three, speaking. They keep coming to the well, keep raising assessments, keep raising the overall amount of money that comes out of our family's budget every year. And it'll be interesting to see how this whole thing rolls out. I mean, but the last time such attention was paid to Star Hill, all of a sudden, a sixty-unit building was going up on the corner of our, of our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Thomas Penny.
All right, so let's, thank you, Mr. Penny. So, good evening. I'm going to change my remarks a little bit. My name is Thomas Penny. I'm the president of Donahue Hospitality Services. We are one of the partners that developed the Drasman that just opened in May of last year. I want to first speak to the opportunities that our industry affords. I started in the hotel business washing dishes. My only brother, two years my senior, was killed my first year in the business on a night where we were out celebrating my eighteenth birthday. A few days later, my father told me to deliver remarks at his funeral, and at eighteen years old, all I could do was stand in front of the, his casket and say everything I do going forward was to make him proud. Went back to the hotel two weeks later, and over the next eighteen months, I went from washing dishes to being the second highest person at my first hotel. Today, I run the hotel company. I'm proud of us having four African-American females running hotels for us. I'm proud of the five hundred kids that we support in Washington DC, but we have four hospitality academies. I'm proud of the returning citizens that we hire. I even went on TV in Washington DC, much to the chagrin of the industry, and talked about how this returning citizen who served as my doorman was one of the best employees in my hotel. And I went on record as saying that I give, I give preference to those who've had backgrounds. And so when we talk about living wages at the Drasman, we're paying on average about fourteen dollars an hour. For us, because of what I experienced personally, it's not so much as important, you know, the point of entry. We want to ensure that everybody has an opportunity to grow with us. We're opening, we have three hotels under construction right now. We want to have people in positions of leadership to grow into them. I am all day long in support of education. I've worked in DC with mayors to select chancellors. I am all day long in, in support of affordable housing. I was here last week, and I was riding through West Haven and some of the public housing communities in Charlottesville just to understand. I think this is a unique moment in the history of Charlottesville. In essence, it needs to be business and elected officials, not, it shouldn't be affordable housing, education, or business. We have to work together. What we have seen is that since we've opened our hotel, the hotels that we compete against are down ten percent. Obviously, we've invested a significant amount of resources, and every time a person comes, we can get, we can get employees' hours. And to the extent that business is down ten percent, that those are hours folks are not getting. And so we oppose, we believe that if we can work to get more people coming back to Charlottesville, we can increase the taxes, we can do some things creatively in affordable housing. I'd like to work with your superintendent around education and how we can better serve the kids, introduce them to our industry. The five hundred kids in DC, we're teaching the hotel business from operations to ownership. We have ownership sessions, but we have the chance to have them evaluate if they were to purchase hotels, they would model it and understand what that looks like. And so this is a low-floor, high-ceiling industry, and I want to make certain that's understood. I want to make certain that when folks come in our hotels, especially folks of color, that they see individuals in positions of leadership to help them graduate in the business. And so I think this is a unique time for Charlottesville. We're looking forward to working with you. There are folks from the industry here today. And again, we work together in other parts of the country. I'm excited to be here.
So your ten percent projection, the, the hotel that you represent wasn't open?
So, we opened, we opened in May of two thousand and eighteen. And in essence, when we look at the results from May to December, their hotels, we get what's called a star report that tells us how we're doing against the hotels we compete directly against. And that shows that those body of hotels are down ten percent year over year. And so in essence, and what we've seen by way of our projections, we didn't do nowhere near what we thought we would. And so we believe many of the hotels that opened, it opened because of what Charlottesville was before twenty seventeen. However, what we've seen since twenty seventeen, the market is not as strong as it was pre-two seventeen. And so we actually think it's a time to strengthen the CVB, get the right leadership in place, strengthen them, support them, and invite people back to Charlottesville. We believe Charlottesville can unite the state, can unite the country, to the extent that we all come together.
So your projections included growth?
You say growth. It basically shows year over year a percent of change. And again, it's directly against the hotels we compete against. I'm sorry?
And those hotels are in the area?
You say what?
They are hotels within the city limits.
Absolutely. And I can show it to you. I can show it to you.
And so in terms of, and Susan Payne's comments too, and you can come back and answer since I didn't ask you, but in terms of the, the priorities that we have on the line that the investment is really only being discussed because of what happened in terms of August twenty seventeen, you have families who've been waiting for generations for equity, and this proposed growth, you know, basing it on what the proposed growth, how long do you all suggest that they wait longer?
So, so let me be very clear, right? To the extent that you have to increase hotel taxes, what I'm saying is a percentage of that should go in support of the CVB, so that you can bring more people back to Charlottesville. Now granted, typically, when markets are down, typically in any places in the country, you don't increase taxes when markets are down. That's the typical trend. But I'm saying, if you have to do it, obviously, if there, if there are folks in affordable housing units that need support, obviously, we're sensitive to that. So if you have to do it, all I'm saying is, there should be some resources to go back in the CVB so we can get more people coming to Charlottesville.
So, so you're saying if, if the taxes do have to go up, in any event, not saying we are, but if that is the route on which we go, your request, and what I think I'm also hearing from Ms. Payne is that, and I think most of the businesses, that if you're going to raise the taxes, then we as a council will also put resources back into this industry to help increase the amount of tourism that will also subsequently offset.
Absolutely.
Doesn't that happen automatically?
It only does for the first five percent of our tax rate. So it's only a portion of the first five percent. And once you get beyond that, it's all, right?
But we also have to talk about the job that the CACV is doing. I mean, unless there's a new ad campaign that I haven't seen, then I don't know why we would invest more funding at this time. Mayor Walker, may I interject something?
Okay, but we haven't seen it. Okay.
I may, I may interject, because, and, and thank you for your, your comments, and it's, it's helping and illumine the whole conversation, so thank you. But with regards to the ad campaign at the CACBB, there was a lot of robust discussion, and Mr. Murphy can attest to that, about the original tack that they took, which they were playing off the word "civilization." And it was extremely, extremely offensive to many of us. We said repeatedly that that was not the way to go. We understood we needed to do campaign ads for the, for the industry. So we have changed that. I just want to get it very clear. And it was, they had very diverse focus groups that, that did review it.
I'm not, I'm not all.
Excuse me, I just want to finish this, because it's an important point. So that the ad campaign has become much more focused on Charlottesville, Seville. It is not playing off any of this conversation that we've been having about civilization, civility, and it is much more respectful of our community at this point in time. And we did make sure that it was vetted through a very, very diverse. And we did make sure that it was vetted through a very, very diverse group of people that reviewed the ad campaign, and they changed the whole tenor of the process. So, I just want to get that out there because what had been reported by the press, it really was a disturbing tack that they had taken.
So, I can't speak to what it was, but I just see an opportunity to make it stronger. And I see an opportunity to make it more inclusive. It should be, whether, no matter where you live in Charlottesville, you should be proud of the campaign. And so, I just see an opportunity to strengthen it. And again, we gotta work together. From my perspective, that's the only way. That's the only way forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Emily Little? Hold on just a second.
I just wanted to be respectful in case you had questions for me.
Well, she said it. She did ask her.
Yeah, I did.
I'm sorry.
Unless you have an answer for the growth versus, you made the comment about growth versus.
Taxes?
Yes.
I think the state can demonstrate that if you invest in tourism, it does pay more than a meals tax would pay. And tourism dollars are instant revenue, so it would be an instant advantage. Is that?
Yeah, I think we have another conversation. I have more questions, but I mean, we have a lot of, so I.
Okay, I just thought you had a question.
Yeah, no, thank you, Ms. Penny.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Emily Little and I live in the county, but I volunteer a lot in the city. And I'm actually considering a city move because to lower my carbon footprint because I'm always here.
Come on, we'll take you.
What?
We'll take you.
Okay, okay. You're not getting rid of me. So, I'm here to deliver a hundred and twenty-seven signatures in another petition that we've been gathering hand signatures because there are different populations that are online and other populations that aren't online. And our petition is to the City of Charlottesville for increased climate protection. And what people were agreeing to by signing it was that they support the City of Charlottesville taking action to protect our community from the harmful effects of climate change. I support our community setting a goal and creating a climate action plan that will help keep global warming below one point five degrees Celsius. What was really interesting about gathering these signatures is how excited it gets people to have it moved to a local level. Climate change is scary and ominous and feels completely out of your control. And when people heard there was a potential for the city to do something locally, people were excited. It made them excited and less scared. And I think as the goals are set, I think that energy will continue to grow. And I think people are really ready for Charlottesville to be a leader in this. One group that you heard from already today, C Three, the Charlottesville Climate Collaborative, has been engaging all these individuals, including someone like myself and mothers and religious communities and all sorts of different people who maybe haven't always come to the conversation about climate change. And again, it's just people are really excited to think about the fact that they can do something. Their individual action isn't gonna be the only thing needed, but it's something. And it's really exciting. I wanted to say one thank you to Kathy Galvin. I've been following your work and I'm really excited because I think a lot of people are getting behind things that you've been saying for a really long time. So, before I left my house today, my daughter Maria, who's five, we were talking about the Lorax. And so, I wanted to give you this picture of her because I think that you have been a Lorax in this community for a long time, speaking for the trees and speaking for the environment of Charlottesville. And I hope that Charlottesville steps up and continues the work that you started.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wow. I love the Lorax.
David Swanson?
This is it. Please sit.
Beautiful. My name is David Swanson. I live on Gillespie Avenue. One of the side benefits perhaps of what I'm proposing could be some good press for Charlottesville that would cost exactly nothing. The petition at divestseville.org, which has hundreds of signatures there, is proposing that the city have a policy of no longer investing in weapons companies or fossil fuel companies. And I was surprised to know that the city does do that. We were never asked. I would be happy to go with a public vote if we are asked. I would be confident which way it would go. The city has passed resolutions I've been so proud of in the past against wars, asking the U.S. Congress to move money from militarism to human and environmental needs. And yet, we've got our public money invested in weapons companies, companies engaged in environmentally destructive wars in countries where most of the people are not described as white. We have weapons companies selling weapons around the world to dictatorships, U.S. weapons on both sides of numerous wars. Weapons companies, the City of Charlottesville has our money in, selling weapons to Saudi Arabia to create the biggest humanitarian disaster the world has seen in years in Yemen. We have fossil fuel companies with our money in them while we're talking about these initiatives to do better on climate or investing our money in the worst possible entities that there are, corporations like ExxonMobil. This is our future we're talking about. These are the companies that our National Security Advisor, John Bolton, says would benefit from overthrowing the government of Venezuela, a possible new war. This is not something the State of Virginia can prevent. This is something the city has the right to do. There are many things it can't. This is one it can and it's done before, as Michael mentioned earlier. And this is not a national and global issue only. This affects our climate right here in Charlottesville, the gun violence that comes to Charlottesville, the war culture that comes to Charlottesville. And you can make just as much and more money investing more ethically as you make investing without any regard to ethics. And this city has had a regard to ethics before on Sudan, on South Africa, et cetera. If you go to divestseville.org, you will see hundreds of signatures. I can send them to you by email if you'd like. I would like, again, to ask everyone to stand up if they support taking our public money out of weapons companies and out of fossil fuel companies and making that a policy for this city and setting that example for other cities in this state as cities around this country are doing. Thank you, and I would welcome any questions you might have now or in the future.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Murphy, I have a question. Mr. Murphy, if we were, if we were, because I'm just looking it up and then I'm reading the resolution and whatnot, and I've read some of the materials beforehand. But if we as a city were to look at divesting, what would that look like? Because I know there's a lot of different companies in which we currently are tied to, maybe that we shouldn't be for whatever reason. But in this particular instance that's been requested by several members of the community, what would that look like?
Well, I think that you want to bring in some folks from the Retirement Commission.
Yes, sir.
Particularly Mr. Vandiver. He's the person charged by the public as making some of those investment decisions as an elected treasurer. You know, the commission is going out to bid now for a investment firm. And so, it makes good sense that, you know, we might include that as part of the scope in the R F P so that anybody who responds might be able to advise us on that particular issue. So, I think there is some complexity in unpacking as the city has many different investments, right? But it certainly could be done. And I think the first two steps would be to learn from Mr. Vandiver and to make sure that we're asking all of the firms to be able to advise us on that and not to select a firm who can't do that work.
I would be on the lines of that. I would be interested if any of my colleagues would also have the appetite to place Mr. Vandiver on a council agenda, maybe late April or early May. We obviously couldn't do it at the next meeting or anything like that because there's a lot of preparation. But us getting Mr. Vandiver on an upcoming agenda to have this discussion, to hear out exactly what our options may be.
Mayor Walker, I would like to second Mr. Bill, Councilor Bill, on these requests. And I believe that our attorney is also looking over the resolution. So, I do agree with that. And to Mr. Swanson, what, six years ago, you brought forth a resolution where it was about tactical decisions concerning the use of military, where the City of Charlottesville was weighing in whether or not to bomb certain parts of the world. I couldn't agree with that. I didn't think we were qualified to make a decision about military tactics. This, however, is really something we can look into. And so, I really appreciate, I appreciate what you've done because it does get to the point where, as a local elected government, we can make these kinds of decisions. And yes, I have always been strong about the environment and weaning us off of fossil fuels. To do that is going to be expensive. That's why we've been having these challenging conversations about changing our streets so that they're not so auto-centric. Something's gotta give. Something's gotta, be it taxes or be it taking away from other priorities. But the principle is really sound. So, I really am very, very, very interested in looking at this. And it is something local government can do, so I appreciate you being sensitive to that.
That's true.
Thank you.
And I guess my contribution to this, and I also want to, I want to thank the activist, Mr. Swanson, for bringing this and all the passion. And I've done some research into the divestment movement also. I would, I would think, especially going forward, there's a whole spectrum of how you can view your investments. There's even social impact investing where you have a much more fine filter. To me, there are two different things going on here. There are stocks and companies related to energy and there are ones related to defense. In my view, we would, those are two separate resolutions because we may in the future want to divest from another problematic industry. And I would prefer that we view those separately. And we just, there are two different objectionable classes of industries that have been put together into this one resolution, and I think we're looking at two different ones. And they could be evaluated separately. And then we could even look at other, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, municipalities that are looking at gun, like the gun industry. That's a whole separate industry from ones involved with weapons, nuclear weapons. I just, you know, I found a militarization. I don't know if this is the one Mr. Swanson looked at, but it's putting together nuclear weapons and defense and, you know, there's, I just think we're gonna need to be careful, which I assume that everybody would want us to be, while also being ethical and looking at the purposes of all this. And I just think that there are two different classes of industry that this resolution is looking at. But that may not be the majority.
So, it seems as if we have the appetite. I mean, maybe the second meeting in April would be appropriate.
It may have to be the last meeting.
Yeah, because staff's really overwhelmed with budget.
Oh, right, sorry. First meeting in May, more than likely. Right, because we have the budget stuff.
Could I respond very briefly to what's been said? No. No, I can't?
We've had yours. But, okay, so we.
Either way. Okay, so he said either.
Either, okay. So, then if, if there's appetite for it in that regards, I guess the other question would be, since there is currently, or is the R F P currently out, Mr.?
No.
Yeah.
I just want to check on the timing of that.
I think we should probably message the council tomorrow when they can investigate what the potential time of the R F P is, see how that jives with council's desire to have it come in front of them.
Yeah, okay. So, then that's a win.
Excuse me, Mayor Walker, it does seem like Mr. Swanson wants to respond. Would it be possible for letting him respond to the, to note a point that Councilor Signer made? Is that what you wanted to do?
Just less than a minute. I just want to respond very briefly, if that's okay. I respect the notion that there are two separate issues here, and I included them both because I think they're both important, but also to make the point that they're not really separate issues, that the military is one of the biggest destroyers of the environment, that the wars are fought for fossil fuels openly, explicitly in many cases, that the money that's needed to protect the environment is sitting in the military budget, that it's very hard to really separate these two. And I would also strongly encourage avoiding the notion and the word "defense" when talking about weapons dealers that deal weapons to dictatorships and democracies alike around the globe, the weapons that are used on both sides of most wars. Which side is the defensive one? I don't think there's any need to use that particular word unless it's really explicitly justified. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Brandon Collins?
Good evening, Brandon Collins. I live in Charlottesville. I've lived here my entire life. I have three children who've lived here their entire lives. And tonight, I am speaking on behalf of FAR, of which I am an employee. FAR is the Public Housing Association of Residents. We are the federally recognized, federally mandated resident council and resident advisory board for all three hundred and seventy-six homes, all three hundred and seventy-six families living in public housing here in Charlottesville. And we just want to encourage you tonight to approve the Critical Slopes waiver that's in front of you. This is another one of these seemingly small and seemingly simple steps that you all have taken over a number of months to really make the redevelopment of public housing a reality. We are on the cusp of making historic changes in the city after never really seeing it and having the opportunity to change the course of history and really do something spectacular. It's not a done deal yet, right? But this very simple step is quite meaningful. What this will do will lead to a tax credit application getting in and the very near construction of sixty new homes at South First Street along with the renovation of Crescent Halls to begin the redevelopment effort here in Charlottesville, which will not only provide a brighter future for nearly a thousand people who live in Charlottesville, but will also provide additional affordable housing for thousands more as we move into the next decade. And that is meaningful, and we really appreciate your political support. We appreciate your staff's time on this Critical Slopes issue. They put in a lot of work. And we really appreciate your financial support of this effort. It's been a long time coming and let's keep it coming, right? On the issue of the Critical Slopes waiver, originally, when the site plan was submitted, there was some thought that it wouldn't need a waiver because it wouldn't disturb the slopes. After working with the staff, come to realize the safe thing was to get the waiver and worked really close with the staff to get that. And it went to the planning commission, got unanimous approval and some additional conditions. And what I think is really cool is that in terms of stormwater and how it affects Pollack's Branch, the way the site sits now is actually not as great for Pollack's Branch. What will be in place with the new development will actually be an improvement over the current situation where the land's just sitting there unused. So, we hope you support the environment and good, smart decisions about redevelopment. And we really hope you'll continue to lend your enthusiastic political and financial support to the effort. Thank you.
To Matt Murphy?
Matt Murphy, one oh nine Robinson Woods. I'm gonna cede my time to Marie Scott.
Hello, it's a pleasure. My name is Marie. I'm from Charlottesville. I'm twenty. So, I just wanted to talk about Habitat and its effect on my life the past couple of years. When you're six years old or seven years old, you shouldn't be thinking, "Am I safe here? Where am I gonna move to next? Am I gonna have to go to a new school?" Those were thoughts that were on my mind as a child. One day, my family told me that Habitat is gonna be building our first house. My first thoughts were mine, my own house. I was very excitement. My parents had a great energy and my dad would take us by every week to see the building site, even when it started off with its first bricks. Memories I will never forget. When we went to the dedication ceremony, I remember feeling so overwhelmed, seeing all the neighbors and members of the community come out just for this here, to see our house, something that we all built together. My parents were really relaxed because not having to deal with rent doesn't mean living day to day. You have a place to be with your family and your house actually becomes a home. With this being said, they were able to invest into my education because they didn't have to worry about the bills. I was able to go to St. Anne's and then I ended up at P V C C and now I plan to transfer to Radford. Right now, I'm currently a sub-teacher at a private school, so I really thank my parents and Habitat for helping me have these opportunities. Countless other children are like me out here. Affordable housing is a key facet into ending the generational cycle of poverty. I encourage you all to think about how homeownership impacts someone's life. It's really great to allocate money to furthering the development such as friendship courts and stuff that we have, but don't forget about Habitat because, sorry, one second. Because it actually promotes financial literacy. It promotes generational wealth. It gives opportunities for not only family members, but their children for generations to come. I encourage you to look over through your plan again, not saying it's wrong or anything, but I think there's definitely wiggle room to work. Again, I want to thank Habitat, my family, and you all for taking time to listen to me. Many people come from different backgrounds and build a bridge of empathy when they work with Habitat, whether it's volunteering, being a family in need, or just being a community member. We all can work together to make a house a home.
Thank you. You did a great job. You did a great job.
Thank you.
You did a great job speaking just now, outstanding.
Thank you.
Very excited for you.
Thank you.
And I don't have the figures, I guess maybe we can share those the next time, but the city has been investing in Habitat a lot over the past year, so.
I'll be talking about it.
Okay, so, I don't want anybody to think that there hasn't, there has been a commitment, even when there wasn't a commitment, in the maintaining homeownership in the traditional route, which I think is really key and something that we are working on. So, Mr. Murphy will be talking about that, but I think that's important, especially, I think we've had three comments. Garrett Trent.
My name's Garrett Trent, I lived in the city, I'm going to give my time to Dan Rosenzweig.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Murphy, Mayor Walker, and members of City Council. My name's Dan Rosenzweig, I'm speaking on behalf of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Charlottesville at 919 West Main Street. I very much appreciate the city manager's commitment to affordable housing. Three, $32 million projected in the CIP over five years, especially insofar as it seeds a few incredibly important initiatives, such as Friendship Court and Crescent Halls redevelopment, Sixth Street, plus the city voucher program. It's an excellent down payment on addressing the lack of access to safe, decent, affordable housing in the community. At the same time, I strongly urge you to direct staff tonight to revise the CIP to include 1.55 million in the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund for this coming fiscal year. Here's why. This budget zeroes out funding for affordable homeownership. We don't just have a housing unit crisis in this town, we have an equity crisis. On average, an African-American resident in Charlottesville has one-tenth the wealth of his or her non-African-American neighbors. And the reason is very simple, lack of home equity. But this equity crisis didn't just fall from the sky. A majority of Charlottesville owner-occupied homes are in neighborhoods that had anti-black restrictive covenants. Much of Charlottesville that was torn down in the name of urban revitalization was African-American owned, and it must be replaced. Not just with rentals where equity accrues to investors, but with opportunities to own and build equity and build wealth for this generation, the next generation, the next generation. A full and healthy housing system is a dynamic ladder with mobility from one rung to another, no matter where you start out. This budget has no funds for homeless housing, not enough for rehabilitation to help families stay in their homes, and no opportunity for equity gain. By zeroing out the CAF, there's no money available for projects and proposals that haven't emerged yet. The CAF was created when Mayor Dave Norris was in office to provide a flexible, dynamic source of funding that can be leveraged strategically as when new projects come up. This program has resulted in hundreds of housing solutions in Charlottesville, from an SRO to numerous Lytec apartments, to rehabs, affordable homeownership, thank you, Mayor Walker, and the first-in-the-nation trailer park transformation without resident displacement. In recent years, the RFP process for CAF funding has gotten more sophisticated, helping council choose the most promising, highly-leveraged, and impactful projects. Now, speaking specifically about Habitat, if you pass this budget, you would basically, you would basically eliminate our ability to build in the city. Where we've built more than 200 homes, helped families earn more than $60 million in home equity, more than doubled the number of affordable homes in our highest-income census tracts, and leveraged close to $30 million in private philanthropy and outside public funding. In fact, if we are unable to access CAF money this year, we would lose up to $60,000 per unit in support from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. That's a two-to-one leverage. We have 51 families in our program currently earning sweat equity and working towards homeownership, and have applications from 200 more each year. Please don't let their dreams die. If you support homeownership, please stand up. Thank you very much.
So, and we're going to be having a lot of conversations over the next month, but I think we also need to make sure that we are thinking about what has traditionally happened in the city? Whether that needle is being moved, how to move it? We need to think even in terms of programs like Habitat, the traditional homeownership model versus not. And look at the number of units that would be potentially coming in as a result of some of the affordable housing increases. Especially when you're talking about the conditions that our families who've been living in public housing sites, that they have been living under, and why this investment this time. And also, for people who are coming up to speak, what I think is helpful for us to hear is proposals that may not be necessarily in favor of you or your program, or your restaurant, or your hotel. And if there are different options that you would like us to consider other than not taxing you, or not investing in you, if you could bring some solutions to the table too, that would be very helpful while we're having this very important conversation. All right, so Peter Castiglione.
Matt Castiglione.
Castiglione.
Thank you very much. Peter Castiglione, 1516 Chesapeake Street. Couple of quick notes about the fiscal year 2020 budget. After chatting with city staff last Friday, I believe that there is no hole in this budget. The budget can be balanced without tax increases. The city just received a $6 million windfall from the 2019 tax assessments. Although 3 million of that is already appropriated to the 2020 budget, it is my understanding that the other 3 million has been collected and is currently unappropriated. On top of that, tax revenues are outperforming the fiscal year 2019 projections. I'm assuming you guys were conservative after 2018, and the tax collections that we've had thus far are ahead of schedule, to the tune of several million dollars at the end of this fiscal year. If there's 3 million sitting there already, and we're going to have 2 or 3 million more, we don't have a hole in this budget. An increase in meals tax from 5% to 6% is not a 1% increase, it's an increase of 20% that would leave the city at a rate 33% higher than Alamo County. We watched in 2015 as city management and some city councillor tried to shovel the logic that a 25% increase in the meals tax rate was just one penny on the dollar. Nobody's going to notice. The restaurant industry slowly sucked an extra $1.8 million out of its customer base, one penny at a time. We can look back now and see how that luggage has played out. The county has opened 39 new restaurants and hired 740 new employees, while the city has shown no growth in restaurants, lost upwards of 200 jobs in the same time period, and in fiscal year 2018 reflected the worst growth performance in recent history. Tax increases have consequences. These proposed increases are always, at this point of budget, pre-budget talks, sugar-coated as this necessary step that must be taken to champion one cause or another. In 2015, it was police, it was city schools, and it was a 2% raise for the city employees. This year, it's affordable housing and city schools. Ultimately, the extra money that comes from these tax increases goes right into the black hole that we call the general fund, and gets appropriated out year after year, depending on who's sitting on this council. So the idea that it's going right to these programs while we're championing the reason we need these tax increases, while I already think we have the money, is not the truth. Okay, that is a deceptive way to put this budget forward. This pre-budget production is slippery, okay? And for some reason, it's become the status quo. And I'm begging you guys to stop whitewashing this thing, number-spinning, and dumbing down this magic show for everybody. Okay? The restaurant industry was proposed to you guys and propped up with a report from January the 6th, and I gave it to you. And that information was incorrect, to the tune of $29 million, okay? I got the information, I talked to city management, city management changed it, they emailed it to you. But had I not poked my head into this mix and read that report, you would be up here today making decisions on raising meals tax on propped-up incorrect information. That should not be happening.
Thank you. So could you, you made a comment about the, that the tax revenue is outperforming projections.
That's what I understand, for fiscal year 2019.
In what areas?
This is 2019, we're eight months into it, we've got four months to go. Thus far, supposedly, they're performing better.
In what areas, do you know?
I do not know the specifics. I do know the amount of money that I was informed by city staff.
So is it the restaurant and-
I'm not sure how up restaurants are, but don't forget that we took a beating in '17, and in 2018 saw no growth. And even if the 2019 meals tax collections are going up, and we're seeing higher revenues, we all borrowed money just to make it through 2018. We're still paying back debt that's left over from what happened in 2017. So if you see this increase of income coming into the restaurants right now, all 265 of us, that's how many we had in 2015, that's how many we have now, that doesn't mean we're doing well. We've got to, we've got to cover the cost of inflation, ever-increasing health insurance for our-
Is that different from normal businesses?
It's the same as businesses, but what you understand is, our businesses need to grow at least 3% a year just to keep up with inflation. And they didn't, they stagnated and dropped. So if you're seeing an increase now, maybe, maybe we're going to eventually get there, it's a terrible time to tax the restaurant industry.
So how has your restaurant been impacted from the 2015 increase?
Of, we've seen very little growth since the 2015 increase.
No, your restaurant is Maya.
I'm talking Maya Restaurant, yes.
Okay.
We have leveled out, yet our health insurance is through the roof, our wages are way higher, we start people with $12 an hour just in the dish pit. Our general manager started as a 17-year-old and is now a salaried manager.
No, but I'm asking, how has your restaurant been impacted negatively since 2015?
I, I, I can't grow my sales, and my, my assessments keep going up, my triple-net lease keeps going up, my costs keep going up, and my, my sales are staying exactly the same.
But in terms of the meal tax, because the assessment that is something that normally happens in, I'm just trying to get a-
An idea as to how meals tax hurts the restaurant industry?
No, how it hurts you specifically, because I think you could speak to that.
It hurts me the same way as it hurts everybody, I have to increase my prices.
But I'm asking, okay.
Do you think that I don't want to, if I sell 4,000 trout in a year, because I'm my highest seller every year, I can't just raise the price from $22 to $23 on that trout to know I'm going to get $4,000 more dollars a year out of it, because it doesn't work that way. But if I raise the meals tax, I'm automatically charging my customers more, and you're forcing me to raise our prices on our menu. And don't forget that 20%, 1% of every 5% of the meals tax we collect goes straight to debt service. None of that's going to any of these programs, and nobody out here is being told that.
So Peter, may I ask a question? Mayor Walker, excuse me. Mayor Walker, may I ask a question?
Sure, I was done.
No.
Go ahead.
You'd be, you're really-
Go ahead.
So, one comment that you made really stuck out to me in regards to how a certain portion of the funds, as you alluded to, they go straight into the black hole of the general operating budget. So if we were to pass a resolution that stated that these funds, if we were to increase taxes, went specifically to, i.e., affordable housing, or schools, or whatever, right? That 100% of those funds, well, a portion would have to go to the debt service, and then the remaining went strictly to that issue, would that make you feel better?
It wouldn't make me feel better, because we don't need to raise taxes because there's already money in the budget. But if we were going to do that, we could do what Roanoke did several years ago. They raised the tax, they said the extra money coming from that tax was going to go straight to schools. And they did it for two years, and as soon as that two years was up, they sunsetted it back down. But be careful with the sunset.
Well, here's the issue with that.
Here's the problem with sunsets.
Yeah.
You'll say we're sunsetted, but a new council can come in and you say that sunset is not going to happen. So that's a slippery slope as well.
Agreed, well, that was a suggestion that you brought up. I was just asking specifically in regards to, as you, as you, well, let me finish. As you were breaking it down, because your apprehension was, or apprehensiveness was rather, that you did not want to see us taxed to bring in monies that would not go to the actual issue. But if we were to create a situation in which those funding, those monies would go specifically to the issue, would that still not satisfy you?
My, my, my point, Wes, is I want, I want you to tell everybody where the money's going and not pretend like it's going to the issues. If it goes to the tax or it goes to the general fund, I'm okay with it, as long as you're telling everybody that money's going to the general fund, and not pretending like these tax increases are going to put this money into these programs, because that is attaching, you're personifying the tax. You're getting the people to bond with it, and to consider, "Oh yeah, I'm going to get my way if we raise that tax. Whatever program I want to see funded, we better tax the restaurant industry to get it." But that's not the way it works.
Okay.
So I just, I just want some transparency in how the system actually-
And we'll have, we could further have this discussion during the budget sessions. I mean, I think, just for now, we've already belabored the point, but thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for the time, I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Joan Fenton.
Hi, I'm Joan Fenton, I have businesses on the downtown mall. First, I'd like to thank you all that there are now signs on the crosswalks at Second Street and Fourth Street that say to stop for pedestrian crossing, which is a great improvement, and I'd like to suggest that at Fourth Street, when you get to Market Street, I mean, to Water Street, rather, that there be better signage as well there. Secondly, also on a traffic issue today, they closed Water Street, and all the traffic was routed down Second Street. When you get to Market Street, there should have been a police officer to speed traffic up, because your traffic was backed up on Water Street at 5 o'clock like you wouldn't believe. And if you're going to close Water Street, you have to figure out how you're going to route your traffic. On the issue of taxes, I think for many of us in the business community, we are all in support of all the efforts that you're making in housing and equity and all those issues, but we feel that the city has better ways of getting income. There are projects, I know Oliver Kuntner told me it took him four years to get the permits together for his building. If that building had happened in six months, you would already be getting taxes from it. There are other projects which are by right, can happen, and if that process speeds up, you can get funds for it without having to raise taxes on anybody. I also believe that one of the issues that we've been trying to make tonight is that it's proven that when you invest in tourism, you make back $6 for every dollar you spend. And what's happened is, many of the businesses in town and everybody that's concerned is saying, "My business isn't strong right now. I've lost because of tourism, that loss of people locally coming down because of tourists not coming here," means that a lot of businesses feel fragile, they feel threatened. They're going to pay, the increase in property tax is going to go up 5%, they're the ones that pay them. If they're a restaurant, they usually absorb that extra 1% tax, because if you're paying $2 for a cup of coffee, they're not going to raise it to $2.02. That the tourism tax will scare away tourists, and if they don't stay at the Omni, they don't come downtown. If they don't stay at one of the other hotels by UVA, and they stay in the county, that money gets spent in the county. So you have to look at the overall picture, which is how do you bring those tourist dollars down here and those visitors' dollars down here? Because that's what I think is probably the biggest industry in Charlottesville, is tourism, whether it's from Monticello, UVA, the downtown mall. And so there has to be some support so that we're all working together to get that income to happen. And it's not simply just taxes. There's other ways. Thank you.
All right, Roy Van Dorn.
I'll be the only, Roy Van Dorn, my office is on High Street. I'm bringing a gift for each of you, which I think Mayor Walker took a version of that last year to your trip to Africa. These are, this is the lodging, this is in every lodging room, 6,000 rooms. It's what we do, one of the things our industry does, to help build our industry, and that is repeat visitation by our visitors. It's an important industry because, let's, let's kind of look back at how big this industry is. Here in Charlottesville, the greater Charlottesville area, which is the five-county area, we have 2 million overnight guests. If you add in how many people here come here for day trips, and surprisingly, a large number, how many people stay with friends, that number is 5 million people. The economic impact of that is huge. It's the single largest private business organization or group in our community. And that's, and it's mostly comprised of small business people, like Peter, that live in town, I live in town, we all live and work and have small businesses. Inside your book, I've got a chart, and I'm just going to, sometimes we kind of gloss over the numbers, but there's a chart here from the state that just came out a couple of days ago. I've highlighted Charlottesville, and you can see that our occupancy compared to last year has been down 11%. That has real consequences for people that have to work day in and day out in properties. They, we don't have people that go to restaurants, hours have to be cut, hard decisions have to be- have to be made by general managers. And it's just not the time to tax an industry that's going through a little bit of a stumble. There could be a lot of reasons for it, and I, I urge the council to kind of embrace industry and say, how can we grow the pie bigger? On the other side is a slide from the Convention and Visit Bureau, and it kind of gives a thumbnail sketch of how much we are actually spending as a community compared to our city budgets. And as you can see, compared to places like Williamsburg or Chapel Hill, we're, we're spending a fraction of the dollars that they spend as a community to make next year and the year after grow and be vibrant. And with my remaining time, is Charles, you ready to come up? Charles is the general manager of the Residence Inn, and I'll just let him speak for himself.
Thank you. Charles Friend, 611 Rugby Road. Good morning, Mayor Walker, or afternoon, and city councillors. I want to touch base on what Mr. Penny said with Donahue Companies and the hotel. Our industry actually gives a lot of folks a new chance or a second chance. One of the best chefs I've ever worked with was convicted of a nonviolent federal drug felony. He actually cleaned up, came out, and he was one of the best folks we ever had. A lot of folks come out of our industry, they open up their own restaurants, their own hotels, they start off like Mr. Penny, I did the same thing, started off washing dishes as a teenager. I don't know many other industries that'll do that, where you can just start off at the bottom and continue to better yourself. There are few and far between this day and time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Annie Stupp.
Hi, hi, everybody. My name is Annie Stupp, I'm a resident of the city, and I'm a member of the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition. So thank you very, very much for committing funding to affordable housing, especially to public housing redevelopment and friendship court redevelopment. These are really critical. I do just want to address a few concerns. On the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, we still don't see reflected in the budget money for, for the CAF, and it is really critical to fund every aspect of the housing spectrum, homelessness, housing vouchers, public housing, home repair, homeownership. All of these are necessary. And so correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't see anywhere in here homeownership or homelessness. And as Louisa and Maria have noted tonight, homeownership is really, really critical to a healthy functioning community, and it changes lives. And it's a critical tool for preventing displacement of long-time, low-income residents. And we, of course, cannot forget about the homeless population, we are far too wealthy a city to have this grave human rights violation. This is not okay. We cannot, we cannot have this problem. So we really need to commit to every, every aspect of housing. There is enough money in this city, we know there's enough wealth concentrated amongst a huge population, a very affluent people, it's just a matter of priorities. And that brings me to taxes. We've been talking a lot about taxes tonight. So just on a personal note, this is not the Housing Coalition's stance, but it's my stance, the reason people stopped coming to Charlottesville and stopped being tourists here is because of August 12th. It's because the Nazis came here. And in order for us to rectify this reputation, we need to actually show the entire country that we are committed to racial justice and to equity, and stop victimizing low-income African-American communities, that the Nazis came and our own, you know, Virginia residents and UVA alums came and, and victimized. We can start to do this through affordable housing. It's just one piece of the puzzle, but it's a huge piece. We know there's a huge concern about property assessments and they've increased, and that's, and that is a valid concern, and so we really do need to provide expanded tax relief to low-income homeowners to ensure that they're not at risk of being displaced, so that they can pass on assets to their children. That is absolutely critical. But property assessments are going up, because the demand for housing is so great, we're not building enough, and we're especially not building enough for the lowest income, for the most vulnerable citizens. And so we really, really need to commit money to this, and so the clique stance, the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition's stance, we support increasing taxes for affordable housing. We support both the meals tax and the potential for a real estate tax increase, specifically for affordable housing projects, and for expanded tax relief for low-income homeowners. We have not discussed the lodging tax in depth, so I won't speak to that. But Charlottesville has a lower real estate tax than, than the state median, but we have a much higher area median income. It's, it's time for the very wealthy here to start paying their fair share, to offset the costs for deeply affordable housing. We have to protect our most vulnerable citizens in this community. We need continuous and reliable streams of funding. CRHA and, and PHA for friendship court and public housing, these are still only in phase one. If we don't commit this fund, these funds, long-term, where are we going to get the money in the future? Let's commit this to affordable housing. Thank you.
And in the budget tonight, part of the presentation and part of what council is still having a discussion on is the chat program and expanding that. And for the first time, we have included a category for 100% tax relief. Hopefully, that'll go up to $25,000, and you, I think there's over almost 400 families who are homeowners who earn less than $25,000 a year, but right now, it's in the budget of, at half of that, at 12.5, and even that is, what is it, 289 families, I think?
At that, so that's pretty significant, but if you remember, last year, we kind of revamped that program to add more in terms of the, there were only two categories as of last year. You would either get a grant amount of 3.75 or 5.25. Those grant amounts were raised last year to 1,750 and 500, and this year, we are adding the 100% tax relief, and we're still having conversation about up to what income amount, and then the 1,005, 750 and 500 is still included in that. And that's, you know, again, just a, a beginning, but it's one way that families who haven't been able to afford the taxes in the community and the increase, that they get some, you know, some assistance there.
Any comments, other?
Mayor Walker, if I, if I may, what I'm hearing tonight as well is that there is no consistent way to keep the CAF, the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund, stable. That it does seem to be something that can be dipped into at different levels from year to year. And, and several months ago, I introduced to the council the notion of a, what they call a synthetic tax increment finance district. That what that is, is that we would identify our high-growth corridors, I gave Water Street as an example, and we would designate a certain percentage, 30% of the increment increase of taxes to go directly into the CAF, and that way it would be automatic. It would be something that would be somewhat predictable. And I did present that idea to the Housing Advisory Committee in November. It was part of the bigger kind of memo I wrote about affordable housing strategies in a comprehensive way. But at that meeting, I did get the Housing Advisory Committee to say that they were in agreement with that approach. So I will bring this up again under other business to see if we have agreement on getting that on, on an agenda after, after this budget cycle. We're not ready to do that now, and I understand that. But I think, moving forward, we need a dedicated funding stream for the CAF.
All right. Any other comments?
No.
Okay. So we'll take a break until 8:15. Thank you.[1154.83]